This will be the first day we tried to go a few weeks ago. It right up the bottom and... Well, because they were mother distant.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We are going to call the city council meeting for Monday, September 18th, 2023 to order. Tonight, we're going to start with prayer. And Alderman Jones, would you mind leading us in prayer tonight? But before we do that... Before we do that, can we take a moment of silence? The past Tuesday, we had Reverend William Copeland, who had passed away. He was the longstanding Reverend at Morning Star Baptist Church. The services will be upcoming next week, but if we can just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Alderman Jones?
Let us bow here tonight. Eternal God, our Father, we just thank you tonight. We always thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for life and life more abundantly. Lord, we ask tonight that you would continue to let your blessings and grace rain down on each and every one of us. So many of us tonight have smiles on our face, suits on our back, but are going through so many challenges in life. Lord, we ask right now that you would strengthen them and build them up and let them know that it's gonna be all right. Let them know to cast all their cares upon you because you care for them. We ask, oh God, tonight that you will put in their heart that they will forgive themselves for the things that they feel that has keeping them back. But, Lord, we want to be letting them know that God has forgiven you. God loves you. In the name of Jesus. We ask, oh God, tonight that you would bless our mayor, his family, and all of those that support him in his administration. We ask you to bless every alderman, all of the people here that continue to selflessly serve in spite of sometimes they feel like they need someone to lift their arm, but they continue to serve. And we thank you for that commitment that they have given to us as a city. And we ask, oh God, that you will watch over them and protect them over these dangerous streets that they patrol and walk in. We ask, oh God, protect this city. Protect everyone here that we will continue to be close and we will continue to be pleasing in your sight. Give us a heart to love. Give us a heart to forgive. Give us a heart to let some things go that we can now walk in the newness of life that you have for each and every one of us. We ask tonight that you will have your will and your way as we take care of the business of the city. One of the greatest cities. I'm so proud to be a part of. Give us wisdom. Give us insight. And give us the things that we need, the provision. In the, in, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
The city council will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
At the pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'll have public comments. Please give your names and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matter which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Linda Ringey.
Hello. My name is Linda Ringey. I'm a lifelong resident of Kankakee. Went to college in Joliet and also KCC where I was a nurse. And I completed my RN and worked for 35 years at St. Mary's with 15 of it as the Director of Dialysis. I have volunteered at Gift of God Street Church Ministry for, this is my seventh year. I've been on the Board of Directors for six years. All of that time was as Secretary and the last three years as Financial Treasurer. Pastor Ed was there for 18 years and he died in June of '21. And the widow of Dr. Linda Knappel and the board has taken over and kept it going. When we found out, as was the rule, that from the Kankakee Fire Department that we needed the sprinkler system, we started looking around and found that it's gonna cost around $100,000. At this point, we have already got Lady Plumbing worked with us and got the first part of it from the street into the building and also with a very large pump there. That cost was $40,000. Plus, there's a possible $17,000 overage because the, um, the place where the pipes were supposed to be was not marked correctly by the company aqua. So they had to move it and it was $17,000 more. So, um, we are working now. We have paid about $10,000 to Lady so far. We're working with Assurant. We've already paid $27,000. And we have a total of about $40,000 more that we need to pay. Donations are down. We're getting a lot from individuals and churches, and that's where all our money comes from. We're try, I'm trying on the 501(c)(3). I'm a nurse. I'm not technical, but we've got everything that we need. It's just the actually putting it into the system. We have got, I've tried, I've talked with Barbara Brewer Watson, and she had a few people that could help me, CPAs, but they didn't have the time. I've called five other places, CPAs, to get this thing in. They don't have the time. They don't do it. It costs too much money, too much time. So that's where we're at. I gave you the financials. If you look on the last page, the most important thing, you can look through it all. The most important thing is our bottom line. We have $25,000 and we owe about 50. So we need some help. Thank you.
Next is Ken Lockwood.
Ken Lockwood retired from the Sheriff's Department, operated the jail for about 30 years. All total of my Sheriff's Department time. Worked five and a half years for the City Police also. I've been helping out for about two years now with the gift of God. Just briefly, that takes care of my background. Right now, with Assurant, I spoke to him today, and our initial plan was approved by the second architectural firm. And that cost us another $850, plus $150 for permit for that outfit to be working in Kankakee. Just a bit of an overrun that we didn't expect and all, but it had to be done. And that second outfit went ahead, the Carlisle Firm. They approved it. It's been sent through code. And that has been forwarded to our contractor assurance. He was down here today and picked up the building permit, so we're ready to go on that. I'm waiting for a callback when he's gonna be down. I anticipate within a week. And we'll do the final inspection as far as they can start the fabrication and installation. As far as, uh, that's, that's the main issue right now. And just like to add, this past weekend, we did have, um, a garage sale there that some of our excess property from the attic and all. And we were very fortunate to meet a lot of nice people just to show the community support. We had one individual that bought a few things. He came back later. We kind of explained our situation to him. He came back and with the hush, he said, he gave us a wad of money and it was $500, just a donation. And there was many of the other people that came to our sale, purchased a few items, and they say, keep the change. So the community, we do have the support of the community in the area, trying to get this going and all. Just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. It's not all negative, and there's a lot of positive people that want things to be done. Thank you.
Pastor James Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council members, thank y'all for hearing our, our board members, Linda and Kenny. I'm here also with the gift of God Street Ministry. I've been asked to carry on the legacy of Pastor Ed Knappel. Linda is not here, his wife. She asked me would we take over the overseeing of the building and things, and, and, uh, and I said yes. Our ministry said yes. So I'm asking the city council to give us the opportunity. This is September, and it's October, and then there's November. It's gonna get cold real soon. And we don't have a shelter here in Kankakee that's open for the homeless people. We have about 22 beds that we could house 12 men, 10 women. Alderman Lewis has seen our facility. She's been through it. As Kenny and Linda has said, we're doing all we can do. We just don't have enough capital to, uh, once we get up and running, to continue to run. So we asking for help. I know there's some money that's been allocated for us when we become a 501(c). We've done all that, too. We've got the lawyers Nick Elliott and Brian Scott trying to bring this thing together. We, this is four or five months in the making. They still haven't come together where we, we stand for Christ Jesus Ministry. We are a 501(c). And we can be an umbrella over the gift of God. I know the city council, uh, you guys can't just release the money unless we're a 501(c). So I'm, I'm asking you guys to try to come up. In November, we're gonna try to have volunteers and be ready to open November the 1st. That's right around the corner. It's gonna be cold soon. And, uh, if we don't have the funds, we still wanna open. If we don't have the sprinkler system, how do we open? Do we leave the people out there to, to freeze? Y'all gotta make a decision what y'all gonna do. Uh, I mean, in a sense, we can't do it without y'all. So, uh, that's where we stand. We're, we're gonna be ready and we're gonna try to be open November the 1st, which is what, six weeks from now? Not a lot of time. Uh, and we've done all we could do as far as the money and, you know, putting it together. Uh, they're telling us it's still gonna be two months. Even if we had paid for it all at once, it's still gonna take another two, three months for the sprinkler system, the companies to put it in the, the building. So what do we do in that time? Y'all know we're, we're, we're putting forth the effort to put it in and get it in, the council members. So, Mayor, you guys maybe can discuss that. If there's another option, you know, that y'all could maybe come up with to, uh, give us an extension or maybe to open until we do get it. I mean, we're doing the best we can. We're doing all we can. So, uh, my thing is, you know, working with homeless people, addiction people, addicted people, people that's lost, don't know the Lord, uh, it's challenging, but we wanna take on the challenge. We want y'all, we need y'all help. Uh, this city of Kankakee, we don't have a shelter this winter, people. We gotta do something. Y'all gotta do something. So help us, help them. That's, that's where I'm at. Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, we will do item 5, roll call. 5A, City Council.
Jones.
Present.
Noble.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Osenga.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Malone Marshall. Crude.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
We have a quorum. Next is item 5B, department heads.
Kidwell.
Here.
LaRoe.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
Taylor. Landwear.
Present.
Hassick.
Here.
Tigash.
Present.
Nelson. Beasley.
Here.
Hoffman. Crosswell.
Here.
Brewer Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item 6. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, September 5th, 2023? So move, Mayor Curtis. We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Tully. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes from September 5th, 2023? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Crude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Minutes are approved. Item 7, we have no petitions tonight. We'll move on to item 8, communications. Item 8A.
Asbury United Methodist Church at 196 South Harrison Avenue is requesting street closure of the alley behind the church between South Harrison Avenue and South Chicago Avenue to host the Asbury Fall Festival on Sunday, October 1st, 2023, from 11 o'clock a.m. until 4 o'clock p.m.
Mayor, can we combine all three of them?
If you'd like to make that motion, we can.
I'd like to make a motion. We combine, um, item A, B, and C together.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude to combine, combine items A, B, and C. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Cobb. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Crude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Uh, Clerk Goll, can you also read item 8B and 8C?
Yep. Item B, the Kankakee Eastside Junior Football League is requesting permission to host their homecoming parade on Saturday, October 7th, 2023, beginning at 1 o'clock p.m. Item C, the Knights of Columbus are requesting permission to host their Tootsie Roll Tag Day on Saturday, October 14th, 2023, with a rain date of Saturday, October 21st, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve items 8A, B, and C?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Crude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. All communications are approved. Next, we will move on to item 9, our standing committees, beginning with 9A, Community Development from Monday, September 5th, 2023. Alderman Barron?
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee did meet on September 5th, two weeks ago tonight. The few things that I want to bring to the full council's attention, we heard a presentation from two representatives of Catholic Charities of the Diocese of Joliet. They are active within our community. Uh, two, they have two primary departments. The first is a Community Services Division. We heard quite a bit about their, their housing efforts. They do quite a bit around the issue of homelessness. They have six different transitional units within the county. Five of those are within the city. Um, last year, they have a homelessness program that was able to transition 11 families from being homeless into non-homelessness. They were able to get all 11 of the people that had enrolled. So we heard about their programs and what's important in terms of wraparound services to provide. We also heard from Susan Morell with Catholic Charities about their aging and disability services. One program that we as a council have funded is a, uh, not Meals on Wheels, but it provides for meals for a number of different individuals over the age of 60. This past year, we provided $70,000 through our CARPS program and ended up delivering over 10,000 meals from that allocation eventually. Barbie Brewer Watson provided the Executive Director's Report, which is available for all council members to see. But I would note that on September 26th, ECDA is hosting an event for contractors, potential people who would be doing work with the city, contractors, plumbers, electricians, roofers, painters, siding specialists who would be willing to help us. We have a lot of grant money available, and sometimes we get hamstrung, not on the lack of funding, but the lack of contractors. So this event is to try to get them certified, to understand what the city's processes are. If you know anybody that might be interested, please have them sign up for the event on the 26th. Ms. Brewer Watson also updated committee members about Harbor Place, uh, which is a development that is coming to our community. 36 buildings, 18 single-family homes, 18 duplexes, and they will be focusing on rent-to-own type pathways. So this is something that'll be just off of Fifth Avenue in the Fifth Ward that we're excited about. We also started the discussion about potentially the need for reallocating ARP allocations. We have a deadline of December 31st about what to, uh, how to allocate our funds. So we're a year and a half in advance. We just want to make sure we're making the most efficient use of those funds and had that conversation begin.
Thank you, Alderman Barron. Next is item 9B, Public Safety. Alderman Osinga?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety Committee met on Wednesday, September the 6th. We did have a forum present. There were no public comments. We approved the minutes of our August 23rd meeting. Uh, we had no presentations, no old business. Under new business, under the Fire Department report for the month of August, Jepdi Chief Hyde was present for the Fire Department. Uh, finally, the Fire Department is fully staffed at 51 sworn personnel. They did have one retirement. Captain Skeldon retired, uh, on August 4th. Bills for the month totaled $100,322.30. Upon a motion and a second, the bills were paid. Due to change in billing, uh, $31,000 of that $100,000 was for CanCom Dispatch. And Station 5 had an $11,000 bill for a new paging system. So if you take those two out, their bills would have been $58,000. Bid opening for the new fire truck was done on August 11th. Uh, only one company bid on that, and the bid was higher, we thought. It was $2,368,000 for a new ladder truck. But if we pay for it in full, it'll be reduced to $2,116,986. They also, Department also received a FEMA grant for $727,272 for a new fire truck. Department responded to 616 calls in August. 403 of those were medical calls, but they only have one structural fire resulting in about $25,000 in damage. They did respond to fi, uh, seven mutual aid calls from other agencies in the month of August. But we looked at the training report and the fire prevention report for the month and discussed those. Under the Police Department report, Chief Kidwell and Deputy Chief Austin were present for the Police Department. They're finally fully staffed at 67 sworn personnel. Uh, there was a question last month in discussion about how many officers live and reside in the city of Kankakee. Chief Kidwell reported there's 13 officers that are living in the city of Kankakee. Uh, we now have 90 brakata cameras installed in different areas of the city. Uh, we do have some more order of using ARP funding. And there are seven slot cameras. Those are license plate reading cameras. And we're gonna get two more of those, and they'll be installed at the 308 and the 312 exit when they come in. Once again, there were 30 weapons recovered and taken off the streets in August. Patrol recovered 13 weapons and KMEG recovered 17 firearms. So in the last two months, they've taken 47 weapons off the streets in the city of Kankakee. Not good. Uh, the bills for the month of August totaled $137,223. Upon a motion and a second, we paid those bills. There was a large bill for CanCom for $58,186 and a new bill for, uh, some more brakata cameras for $51,623. And if we hadn't had those two large bills, their bills would have only been a little over $27,000. Chief Kidwell presented information requesting five new squad cars and everything that goes in them, not just the cars, but all the equipment that goes in those cars also. And that total cost was $303,583. Upon a motion and a second, we decided to send that to Budget Committee for approval. Monthly activity reports were reviewed and discussed by committee members. Uh, and under Alderman comments, uh, there was a discussion regarding take-home cars for officers that live in the city. And everybody seemed, and the committee seemed in favor of that idea. This would be an ongoing process and it takes some time to implement. But I think, uh, originally, we were gonna purchase five cars, and I think we have on the agenda tonight to purchase seven cars to, so we could start that program right away. We also had a discussion regarding the shooting incident and what could be done. Discussion lighting would be one important thing that might help. We adjourned, excuse me, we adjourned at 7:10 p.m. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 3rd, at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you, Alderman. We'll move on to item 10, Report of Officers. Item 10A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $594,496.89.
Is there a motion to approve, approve the report of officers for the city of Kankakee?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the report of officers. Let's pay the bills in the amount of $594,496.89.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments regarding the report of officers for the city of Kankakee? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron. I'd like to abstain as to check 81340 and check 3579 to Gordon Electric Supply. Check 81349 to KD Coffee and Tea Company. Check 81354, 3581, and 1375 to Piggish Engineering to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Crude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for the city of Kankakee are approved. Next is item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $719,321.71.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for environmental services?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Any questions or comments about the bills for ESU? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
I'd like to abstain as to check 33920 to Varan Hewitt Oil, 33935 to Gordon Electric Supply, 33942 to Kankakee Truck Equipment, 33952 to Piggish Engineering to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Crude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Bills, uh, report of officers for environmental services utility are approved. We'll move on to item 11, unfinished business. We have none tonight. Under new business, item 12, we have none. We have no appointments tonight. We'll move on to item 13, motions and resolutions. Item 13A.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the demolition and reconstruction of the south-facing garage door of the Public Works Building located at 401 West Oak Street.
This, um, we had a bid opening on August 29th for this with two bidders. We had a bid from NR Construction, the amount of $62,000, and we had a bid from PSI in the amount of $44,963. Uh, this was approved out of ESU Committee to be forwarded to the City Council for approval. This is part of the capital budget that we approved for the 23, 24 fiscal year of ESU. Uh, this is the south door that most of you would see when you pull up to the Department of Public Works Building. If I'm wrong here, Mr. Hassick, correct me, but it's about 10 feet wide. It does have some damage from the past, some cracks and some things from when it's been hit in the past. Get the, uh, trucks with the snowplows through there. There's literally about a two-inch clearance in each side when they do that. This will be now a 14-foot-wide opening with a new overhead door. It'll repair the, uh, the structural repairs that need to be done to the building, and it'll also be much safer for them pulling those trucks in and out there, especially once they have the snowplows on them. Uh, so this is the low bid. Um, and again, it is a part of our planned capital improvements from ESU. So we're looking for a motion to accept a low bid of $44,963 to PSI.
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis.
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Prude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of the proposal for the purchase of one Pierce Enforcer Pumper Truck for the Kankakee Fire Department between Pierce Manufacturing and the City of Kankakee for an amount up to $857,100.
This is, we went out to bid for this. This is part of the FEMA grant that was received from Robin Kelly's office to the Fire Department. Upon receiving that, Chief LaRoche went out and accepted bids for a new pumper truck. We only got one bid, which is very typical for our fire trucks. It is in the amount of $857,100. As we'll talk about, if we prepay that upfront, the amount is $780,079 for that. That is part of what we'll talk about a little bit later here. That's what we expect to do. Part of this bid process is we will receive, we can receive up to 25% of the FEMA grant upfront. We have a 90-10 match on this. So 90% will come from the FEMA grant, 10% will come from the City of Kankakee. As mentioned before, with this truck, with the aerial that was approved at our previous meetings, almost all the equipment within the Fire Department, three ambulances, two pumper trucks that would be new, a rehab, and an aerial, by the time we receive all of them, would have all 10 years or less age on them. So the Fire Department, for the first time in many years, will be in pretty solid condition with their equipment. Chief LaRoche, is there anything you'd like to add to it regarding this bid?
You've pretty much covered it all. The only thing I kind of want to add is the bid that we are accepting is very similar to the engine that we received in 2022. The only major difference is the manufacturer of the motor. The motor is, I would say, less quality, but it's not as beefy as the one that we have in the engine now. At the time, we paid for the engine, engine five. In 2021, we paid $589,000 for that vehicle. The same mention today with a less costly engine is what you see there now. So as you can see, the significant increase in prices over the last two, three years. Unfortunately, it's something that the fire service is seeing, as well as many other industries, you know, in our, unfortunately, our culture now. But it's something to take in, to heart when we're considering these approvals.
Is there a motion to accept the bid of $857,100 for a new pumper truck?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Ossenga. We have a second from Alderman Jones.
Second.
Navarez?
Yeah.
Sorry. I went off the, sorry. We got, we have a motion from Alderman Ossenga. We have a, I'm going to go with second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Bid is accepted. Next is item 13C.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of seven squad cars and equipment by the City of Kankakee Police Department for an amount of up to $450,000. Sorry.
So out of Public Safety, as you heard in the minutes earlier from Alderman Ossenga, it was approved to spend up to $303,000 to purchase five squad cars. That is patrol cars and supervisor cars. Out of the last City Council and several meetings, including Public Safety and Budget, it was also approved. There's the direction of starting sooner than later to get additional cars for take-home cars in the City of Kankakee for the 13 employees. So there was a motion out of budget to increase that number by an additional $150,000 to get two squad cars with all equipment. So we have before you a resolution tonight to authorize Chief Kidwell and his team to spend up to $450,000 for the purchase of seven squad cars. Two of those will be designated as take-home cars, once they're able to get those within the City of Kankakee. That will provide us, now we will purchase with the five, we'll have 17 new squad cars, and then the two additional. So that's 19 total new squad cars in the last three years, and two of those for home Kankakee. So the biggest thing we're talking about here is often the chief will get a call, maybe one squad car is available on a lot. They go very quickly because every agency across the state of Illinois grabs these up as quick as possible. He'll be able to get one, two. Ideally, if he can get five at a time, that'd be great. A lot of times, it takes time to get the parts in also, just once you get the squad cars. So this will give him the flexibility over the next year to get those seven squad cars. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions allowing for the purchase of up to seven vehicles at a $450,000?
So moved, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Ossenga. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments? Alderman Jones?
I just want to say I'm excited about getting seven cars and for the council to really be on the same page. I believe this is a real public safety win for us as a city. And take-home cars, I believe that's going to be a game changer. So I just wanted to say I'm really excited about this.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Jones. And is it correct, the additional funds, or the funds for those two additional cars, are you thinking that would come from excess revenue from last year's budget? Is that right?
Yes. It would, basically ultimately, it will come out of capital.
Okay.
But with our, some of our surplus funds that we have from the previous fiscal year, we'll be moving money, that surplus into our capital account, so that we will basically be self-funding these cars and paying cash.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Resolution passes. Next is item 13D.
A resolution of the City of Kankakee authorizing the purchase of one Volvo L60H wheel loader by the City of Kankakee Department of Public Works in the amount of $175,388.
So this was voted on at ESU Committee prior to this meeting and forwarded to Council for approval. As you may have heard, we had our, they call them wheel loader, or call them front loaders. This was damaged in a accident and bent the arms on it. We turned that into insurance. Insurance totaled out the front loader. So with that, we did receive a $95,000 check from the insurance. That is basically covering the totaling out of the front loader minus depreciation. This is coming from Sourcewell. It is available now for pickup. It's waiting for approval tonight. So the, the front loader itself can be picked up this week, and then the additional, what do we call the front of that, Mr. Hesse?
Four and one bucket.
Four and one bucket will come in a couple days, a couple weeks later. How we're going to pay for this is the insurance proceeds of $95,000. We are moving around. We had budgeted $75,000 in our ESU capital to reseal coat city parking lots. Ideally, we want to do that when the temperature is nice and hot out. We're not going to get that done this fall. Don't really want to do that in March and April, so we will target that in next fiscal year in May, to be had done in May, June, or July of next year. That $75,000 will be reallocated towards the purchase of this. And then additionally, you just approved the new garage door at DPW that came a little bit under budget, what we thought, so that extra $5,000 can be made up there. So no out-of-pocket expenses beyond what we had budgeted. So again, we'll use 95 of insurance, $75,000 of the reallocation of the seal coating, and the savings that we had on the bid to 5,000 will make up the difference and pick this up. Is there a motion to accept the resolution for the purchase of the wheel loader?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Next is item 13E.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of 281 North Rosewood Avenue.
Director Brewer-Watson, can you explain this to us? This is part of the tax sale, correct?
Yeah. The Kankakee County Trustee tax sale is this week. This property is a property that they have allowed us to purchase off of that list before the auction. The first time that this was up for not paying property taxes was all the way back in 2002. There's been several cases and some accommodations made, but they started with other tax issues back in 2013. Then there were about six or seven sales and errors. And now, this property is up for the fifth time at the auction. It has not been bitted on or had any sales and errors. So this is a property that we can get now and purchase, and then we can enter it into our property program. So we'll have, we'll work with our code building inspectors. They'll go in once we get ownership and see if it's something that is savable, if we could sell it to somebody to fix. If not, we'll put it on our demo list, and we will use grant funds to demo the property and then put it into the vacant property program. There are residents around that block that would be interested in having this lot. If it is demoed, there are other people that would obviously like to take a look at it too, if we have it for sale. So there are multiple properties that are up at the auction, obviously, but there is a very limited quantity that we, as a city, can get access to before the actual auction. Some things have made that more challenging because there's a Supreme Court ruling that says who's setting the market value. So there's some challenges there, but this one has a very long history of about 20 years of having some property tax issues, and so this is a property that we could get. There are several vacant lots that we could have looked through too, but there's 100 of them, and there's just not enough time to go through and strategically see which one of those, where those vacant lots are at and plan that. So now that we know the proper way to strategically work with the trustee lawyer, we will do that for next year and see if we can obtain some other properties that are in the same kind of situation that this one property is too. Just so you know, there were two other houses that were in a similar situation. One, the resident was able to work some things out, and so they were able to save their situation. The other house, we already demoed last year, so it's a vacant lot, and we're already maintaining it with some funds, so we're not going to own that one just yet. But that one could be, potentially be something we get later on in the future. So, long story, but this is the only property that we can get this year. Next year, we'll be able to take a look and see which ones we could go after strategically that have this many challenges on them. So always the goal to get property back on the tax rolls if we can.
Thank you, Director Brewer-Watson. Is there a motion to accept the resolution for the purchase of 281 North Rosewood Avenue?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Alderman Prude?
Is that the duplex property?
I believe, yes.
Okay. And the cost on that, correct, Barbie, is $797?
Yes.
Is there any other question? Alderman Jones?
When we obtain, are we going to set the, we going to set the market on that? Are we going to do it?
No, no. Because this property has been in the system so many times, that price has been set by the trustee, so that's what we're going to buy it as. But it'll go into our property program. So our program lays it out, what the price is for houses, and if it becomes a vacant lot, then it goes into the vacant lot program. We'll work with the neighbors on that block.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Next is item 13F.
A resolution authorizing financing the purchase of one Pierce Enforcer 100-foot Ascendant Aerial Tower Truck and one Pierce Enforcer Pumper Truck by the City of Kankakee Fire Department for up to the amount of $2,897,65.
So I believe you should have on your desk there, Comptroller Kubal put this together today. We talked about this at Budget Committee, about how we would purchase these vehicles, these apparatuses, I should call them. I'll kind of go through this real quick. As you saw earlier, we had some bids that came in at $857,100 and $2,368,000 for the aerial truck. If we prepay those, 100% prepay those, there is savings of $328.35. So just a little over $328,000. What we would do is, you'll see that the total cost by prepaying is $2,897,65. We've allocated $500,000 of ARPA money to be placed towards against this. That's already been approved by City Council. We have a 10% grant match on the FEMA grant that the City of Kankakee would have to come up with, so we would apply that money right away, which is $78,007.90. We would ask for the 25% payment upfront from the FEMA grant, which would equal $175,000 by 1778. That would basically mean that we could put down $753,525.68, leaving a balance to be financed of $2,143,539.33. How we would pay that off, you can look at on step two there, is there is the low-interest loan that is through the State Fire Marshal that Chief LaRoche is working with that would be applied towards that, the $350,000. We'd be pledging basically the cannabis excise tax. That facility should be opening up any day now. We are just taking the 3% additional tax off the top of that. We have budgeted $500,000 annually from the cannabis tax. There is discussions that people believe it could be even more than that, but we're being very conservative. So we would be paying $250,000 out of cannabis excise tax over a five-year period. When we receive the FEMA grant after the pumper has been completed, complete bill, which we expect would be somewhere in 24 months, we would apply that additional money from the FEMA grant of $526,553.33. Through the five years, the low, the loan and the grant, that would leave us with $16,986 still to be paid. If you look through there, the interest on this by borrowing, by prepaying this and borrowing from a local entity, we had gotten a proposal from People's Bank. They are going to take this to Loan Committee, I believe, on the 22nd. We would, they need a resolution from us that we can move forward with this. Interest would be, we don't expect it to be more than $425,000, but again, by prepaying, we're saving $300,000. So basically, it's only costing us about $100,000 over this six-year potential term to finance this. We do believe, and we anticipate, that there'll be excess cannabis tax or other developments in the City of Kankakee that are providing us with funding, that we can prepay this loan earlier than six years. So we believe when it's all said and done, there's a really good chance that we get the time commitment by borrowing the money, but paying very little extra money, if any at all, over prepaying this hopefully in four to five years. This allows these to be built, allows us to basically, in a sense of, in the past, a lot of these big purchase items, we've bonded and put these out on a 20-year payment plan on our tax levies and different things. In a sense, we're going to wake up in less than six years and have both these vehicles 100% paid off. Similar with what we just did with the squad cars, same thing. Those will be 100% paid off. So we will have a lot of assets that will not have debt against them. That's good for us financially as a city. We'll save a lot of interest money, and it's also good for the taxpayers that we don't have to levy for those payments over the next 20 years. So this is a resolution authorizing the City of Kankakee to enter into a loan agreement with People's Bank to finance all these upfront so that we can take advantage of $328,000 in savings. And then again, we'll watch this and keep this abreast at budget meetings over the next year, but we anticipate that we can wake up, I'm hoping, in less than 60 months and have this completely paid off. Is there a motion to authorize the resolution to enter into a financing deal for the purchase of the two fire apparatuses?
Don't move me, Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Osanga, is there a second?
Second. Whoever.
Russell?
Go for it.
We got three.
We have a second from Alderman Tully. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen I, zero Nace.
Resolution is cleared. We have no need for an executive session tonight. So we'll move on to item seventeen and that is City Council member comments at this time. Mayor. Alderman Navarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank the City of Kankakee and the Department of Police, the Kankakee Police Department for helping us, celebrating Hispanic, I mean, the Mexican Independence Day Saturday. We were not expecting the mass of people that showed up. So next year, we're planning already for next year to have more police presence. But overall, it went without no incidents. So I'm very grateful for that and just wanted to say thank you.
Any other Alderman comments? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Mayor, I can't count the number of comments I've received over the last few months about the status of the MFT program with projects that are sort of have started and not completed and lots of barricades around. So I mentioned this a month ago, wanted to mention again. I think the deadline for completion is coming up this week. I don't know that we'll make it, but I just want to make sure it's on everyone's radar. It's an issue in the second ward, I'm sure it's an issue in your ward. So I wanted to mention that. Secondly, in this past Budget Committee meeting a week ago, we had the presentation of the fiscal year twenty-two audit. So we are caught up, lots of good news in there. So that's a good, good thing in and of itself, but also good to be caught up. And we got word from the auditors that they expect that they'll be back here in the next few months presenting the twenty-three audit. So that's even, even better news. So that's all, thank you.
Alderwoman Noble.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, that on Hobby, it seems like there's going to be a little bit of a problem with the way it's mapped off. And because this morning I saw people coming this way and this way and there's only supposed to be one lane. They move the barrels and they're just going. Somebody's going to get hurt.
I'm going to have, when we get to department head comments, Mr. Pigash is going to talk about Hobby Avenue, so.
Okay.
Alderman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I want, I want to thank you first, Mayor, for acknowledging one of our pillars in our community. And I, I just wanted publicly to say, I really appreciate that on behalf of the seventh ward and the community at large, as well as around the state, even as Alderman Noble reminded me, around the country, that we had such a powerful band that was with us that, like he would always say, you know, we stand on his shoulders and we thank God for his family and the commitment that he gave to us. And we are praying also, I had to say tonight, for Sister Copeland, that God continue to give her strength at this time. Also, this weekend, we're having our Mary Cress Fall Festival. We thank, first of all, everybody who's already given, all of the vendors that will be there this weekend. It starts at about twelve o'clock. We expect everybody, if you can be there, we know there's a lot going on. But if you can, please come and attend the Mary Cress Fall Festival. Also, two other things, the homeless crisis, you know, that's still dear to my heart. Hopefully, we can do something. I don't know what to do, but I am aware that there are homeless people and I, hopefully, we can, I don't know what to do, so y'all bear with me, it might sound crazy how I'm talking. But, you know, if you can get twenty-three people off the street, you know, we'll do it. I don't, I don't know how to do it, I keep saying that. But I just, I'm in support of whichever Alderman or whoever, you know, whatever mayor this has to do, that we can at least help out with the crisis, that we know that it's coming and probably within the coming weeks. Also, I'm excited about the September twenty-six event for the contractors. And I'm going to try to get the word out because that's really good. I thank Barbie and her staff for that. And thank ECDA for coming out for our meeting that we had as our community speaks. And I really, we appreciate that on behalf of the seventh ward. With Alderman Noble, we say thank you.
Alderman Prude.
Also, our back school bash is on September the thirtieth at Old Fair Park, it'll be from two to six P.M. And also after the Mary Cress celebration, we're doing a kickback teen kind of party for our young people. Something that's dealing with drugs and alcohol, just to give them a safe place to be. That starts at six o'clock, it's going to be at City Life. So we just want people to know that we're still trying to find activities for our young people outside of them, being in the streets, doing other things. So on that same day, the twenty-third, we'll be at the City Life.
Alderman Baron.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I want to follow up on the topic of conversation that really came up from a number of members of the public. Last meeting, you know, the issue of public safety, the uptick of violence that we've seen. The call was put out, come to the table with ideas. And I appreciate you, Mayor, for doing that. I appreciate the members, the public who did that understandably frustrated because there's no obvious or easy answers. I'm glad to see that the community responded. I mean, we've acted on one of those ideas tonight by starting a take-home car program. Other ideas thrown out have been reimbursement for alley lighting, using special service area funds for street lighting. And what I'm excited about filling out the Office of Violence Prevention with an additional staff member. I also think, and I'd like to bring this to the table, it's something I've been talking about in committee, is the, the policy of crime-free housing. Over fifty different municipalities in the state of Illinois, two thousand municipalities in the country have this crime-free housing ordinance on the books. It's something that holds landlords and tenants to a higher standard, brings them to the table to demand results and that we're not going to allow certain activities within the community. And I'll just go through it, what it actually is in three steps. I mean, number one, you have to have a crime-free housing addendum on every single lease in the City of Kankakee. That just means that the tenant agrees that no criminal activity is going to occur on the premises. Housing Authority already requires that. A number of different landlords already require it as well. Since the uptick in violence, a few weeks ago, I've advised a few clients that wanted to do something and they put this in their own leases. This would be a requirement that in every, every lease within the city, that'd be required. The second piece is that if there's a violation of that, if there is a crime that occurs on a property, landlord has to address it with a reasonable plan to mitigate the circumstances, to make sure it doesn't happen again. The way that works is the city sends a letter seven days after, after something happens that says in seven days, landlord, provide us ideas, provide us what you want to do or what you can do to make sure this doesn't happen again. And they're asked to do it. It can be something like fixing, fixing the, adding cameras, improving lighting, keeping a particularly problematic individual from coming back to the location, to the premises. And in certain circumstances, eviction, that might be what has to occur just to keep the status quo from continuing forward. It's an opportunity for crime, excuse me, for code, for ECDA to get involved in that conversation because we know that degrading property leads to more crime. So it's a good opportunity for that. The third piece of it, if a landlord fails to follow through or if they ignore the city entirely and this crime-free housing addendum, there's a penalty. We've got a great number of landlords, people that are invested in not only their properties but our community, but some do fall short. There's a number of landlords that are from out of town that are just not paying attention to what the impact of their properties are on the neighborhood. They put somebody in charge of the property who has no experience, no understanding of what it takes to run a property and it leads to problems for the entire neighborhood. So this would, would hold those landlords, property managers accountable to a higher standard. There's other things you can do with this too. Other communities have done landlord training. That's something that we've had here in the city previously. It's something that ECDA has talked about wanting to do as part of their housing strategy generally. There's also certification you can do for particular properties. But it can be tailored to what fits for our community. I hope that we will move forward on this. I think we've had a number of discussions. Chief Kilwell, I've been able to speak with you and a number of other department heads and alderpeople. My hope is that we can move forward and start to draft an ordinance. I mean, this is a somewhat complicated policy, but we got to get it on paper in order to bring the voices to the table even further and move forward with it. So I, I hope that we can take that, that step to improving this protective measure for the city.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Marzak.
Where do I start? Come to the meeting on, the ordinance meeting on the twenty-sixth and you can have more information on the crime-free housing program and have some input. But that, that would be the place to have discussions and hopefully move forward with that. The other thing I'd like to echo is Alderman O'Brien's, you know, concern with, you know, how they've been working over in this ward, working over in this ward, tearing up a street over here, patching a little alley or sidewalk over here. I mean, you know, they ripped out an apron on an alley that was probably, I don't know, a month and a half, two months ago. They left the, they left the manhole cover, which, you know, is typical of, you know, something like happened to DPW's, you know, truck. They, you know, they didn't hit that one, but the point is, it shouldn't be left like that. So hopefully, you know, if this is a company that is doing this as filler jobs, maybe they can just do like one ward at a time, you know, versus tear up, you know, multiple wards. So I know, you know, there's been probably an incident, incident in each, each ward, you know, over by Smitty's. That was all torn up and left. But on another note, I think we're, I don't know, about eighty-two days, I think it is, from the Christmas parade. So I'm going to start talking about that. It's not too late. The other thing was the amount of people that were downtown was probably, I mean, only second to the music fest. And everything went off without a hitch. It was amazing to see. I mean, shocking, the amount of people and the police, you know, they, they had no incidents down there, but they, they made moves to make sure that everybody was safe down there. Everybody went home. But eighty-two days, so start thinking about your, your float, your ward float.
Any other Alderman comments? Department head comments. Chief LaRoche.
Thank you, Mayor. I know last meeting Deputy Chief Hyde expressed the fire department's gratitude for the purchase of these vehicles. But I also wanted to express my gratitude and the personnel's gratitude for you putting forth effort to updating our equipment. It's a big ask, it's a lot of money. But it, it will help us provide the service to our citizens for a long time coming. In the future, we're going to reduce our costs for maintenance, for our vehicle maintenance. And also, hopefully, we'll have safer equipment. So I actually, again, want to reach out and say thank you to all of you, especially Comptroller Kubal and the mayor who did a lot of heavy lifting with trying to find the right way to pay for it. So appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, I'd also like to thank the City Council for letting us expand and have been our fleet as well. I think Alderman and women brought the idea to us as far as to take home. I didn't ever think that would be a possibility, but I appreciate it. We'll move forward with the now.
Mr. Pigash.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd first like to address the MFT issues we've had this year. I know I've been in contact with the mayor over the last several weeks about kind of our displeasure with the way that they've been doing the work. The deadline to complete this work was actually on Friday. They have requested an extension. Their justification is that they, there were no finishers in the hall to start the, to start the summer. So that's why they didn't start the concrete work first and that's why they started some of the asphalt work first. So we've been on them to, to finish what they start because I'm, you know, this is not how we've done MFT in the past. This is our first time working with Gallagher on street maintenance in a while. So, you know, it sounds like they're attributing a lot of this to labor issues. But the reality is, you know, they can't, they can't disconnect people from their house or from their business. And, you know, we're going to, we're going to have a real heart-to-heart, once this is all done, about, you know, going forward, what that looks like. Because I'm not really happy with it either. So I apologize on behalf of me and my firm to the city on the way this has gone this year. So unfortunately, we can't control means and methods. But, you know, we can control the final product and we are going to make sure it's done right. So, so that's, they're saying they're going to be done within two weeks and then they'll have seating and blanketing to do after that. That's the, the letter we got this morning. So that's where MFT is at. As it relates to Hobby Avenue, the northbound lane is, is closed. It's going to stay closed for a while. I know there's going to be a learning curve with that. I mean, if there's additional signage that we need to put up or additional traffic control measures, we can certainly do that. No matter what we do, when we close a lane on a major thoroughfare like that, we're going to have a little bit of a learning curve with people. And I think we just need to be aware of that. I've already been kind of in contact with Chief Kilwell and Deputy Chief Austin about, you know, what might need to be done. We're going to be taking inventory on what's out there and if we need to make tweaks to that, we will. But there's really no other way to construct this project unless you want to close the whole road down. But I don't, I didn't see the purpose in that and it eliminates an emergency route for police and fire. So I didn't really want to do that either. So they're going to be constructing the main storm sewer run down the east curb line, probably for the next, at least several months for the foreseeable future. So I don't see the northbound lane opening until spring likely. That would be my guess. So, because before we've switched traffic over, they're going to have to put, finish the storm sewer work, do pavement, curb and gutter, sidewalk, then we'll switch traffic over to the west side and, you know, switch the closures. So unfortunately, that's, you know, that's just the way we're going to have to build it. There's really no other way to build it unless we close the whole road down. So at least this way, they're staying off of, you know, at least the construction traffic isn't all over the place kicking up dust. At least they're confined to one side of the road. But I'm open to suggestions, but I really don't want to put the traveling public, you know, in any more risk. And I want to make sure that the contractor is able to build the work or build the project in a safe, you know, expedient manner. So, so that's why we decided to do the one, one lane closure, so.
Any other department head comments? Mr. Hass.
I'd also like to thank the council for their approvals tonight. You know, that, that's really going to help us complete our work and do it more efficiently. Another thing is October sixteenth is the start of leaf season with the hard stop being the first week of December. So just to put that on your radar, I know we have another meeting before that really starts to begin with. But just to throw it on your radar and your constituents' ass.
Any other comments? Okay, I've got a long list here. Usually I don't do much here, but I'll try to go through this. So I do want to thank council tonight. As many of you know, I'm usually one of the most frugal people when it comes to spending money and boy, we spent a lot tonight. But it's all on good things. And so I want to thank council for that. There's a lot of equipment, a lot of things that we spent money on tonight. And in the long run, this is going to be the best thing for the city. So very happy for that. We probably just put a lot of work at the comptroller's office, but I think it's all good things, so. I do want to address a couple of things regarding the MFT. I have, as Neil had talked about, we've had quite a few discussions in the last two weeks. I started meeting with him and talking with him. I expressed my disappointment as much as you did too. How they're hopping around, it makes no sense. We've seen alleyways, it's been two months where they've been barricaded. It seems like in the past, MFT is, they'd go out and it'd be about a seven to ten day process from start to finish and then they would go do something else. Quite frankly, it's, it's been disastrous. I even, Neil's got me the information for Gallagher to have that discussion with them. He's even, to defend Neil, Neil had forwarded me several emails back in July, he was on this. He was asking for, because if you remember, when we did this, we bid this out in late wintertime with work to begin May first in the new fiscal year for the annual MFT this year, with the goal of being done before school started, the very latest. Hopefully it was Labor Day is what we were expecting. And so there are emails from Neil that have been forwarded on where he was asking for what's your plans, how's things going? And quite frankly, not getting any response. So something to keep in mind is we bid out future MFT projects. We're going to have to put some things, but I am having that conversation to at least express my disappointment also. The Alderman and Alderwomen's disappointment and quite frankly, the residents' disappointment that our city has continued to be tore up. I'll be quite frank, I don't think they're going to make two weeks, but I could be wrong. But we'll see, so. So we'll, we'll keep you abreast of that. Regarding the homeless situation, I'm going to talk to Chief LaRoche about that. This is an agency that does have their conditional use permit. Right now, what they're waiting on is the- So we'll keep you up for the rest of that. Regarding the homeless situation, I'm going to talk to Chief LaRoche about that. This is an agency that does have their conditional use permit. Right now, what they're waiting on is the sprinkler work. There is money set aside to help with that sprinkler work, and they just got to get some of their, I'll call it their legal stuff fixed up there. I'm not even sure, I hate to even throw this out there, but I'm going to throw it out there. We've done this in the past, where you have to let 180 days go by before anything can happen. I'm going to talk with Chief LaRoche, maybe with a plan, if they can get the sprinkler system up and installed by the end of the year. I believe that 180 days, somewhere will be towards the end of November, early December, but we got to make sure we follow the precedent that we set before with other agencies, and as long as we're on that same line, maybe we can work the same thing with them, knowing that there's an endgame plan to be fully compliant with sprinkler and conditional use permit. I also want to echo Alderman Navarez. The Kankakee County Hispanic Partnership did an outstanding job. They have done this for several years. I want to thank Monica Pizzano, Natalie Haida, David Guzman, my assistant, and Alderman Navarez. They put on an outstanding event on Saturday. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it there, but this is really, as we said, every year, it's been really good. It's gone from 300 or 400 people to well over 1,000, maybe 1,500, 2,000 people on Saturday night. Talking with DC Austin this morning, there seemed to be no incidences from the event, so that was a good thing, and that's what we want in our downtown, everybody celebrating and having a good time, so we'll continue to support that, and just, next year, we'll make sure more resources are available for the need, a positive thing that's happening in downtown Kankakee, and quite frankly, all over, so. Regarding one of the things that had been mentioned about public safety, lighting was an issue that was brought up, that maybe more additional lighting can happen. Obviously, additional street lighting like you see in Coach Light and in Riverview is something that cannot happen overnight, but I have already talked to Neo and his team, and asked him if they can start putting together a proposal of some sort of what the engineering cost would be to start doing it in different parts of the city of Kankakee. First, we got to get some engineering done for that, get some engineering costs. It's going to take some time, but we've got to start with basic 101 and figure out what kind of cost we have to seek after, and how does it get it done? There's a lot of work that has to be done through these ways there, so we are getting a proposal that we hope that can come forward to take a look at, and we'll keep that moving forward. Some of the other things I wanted to bring up real quick, if I can. You may see down at the, I call it the old Hardee's site, the landing site, you'll see the big pile of dirt down there. We are excavating the old, we'll call it, foundation and slab of the old Hardee's there. That is being hauled out. That's already been done. Black soil is being brought in. That'll be six inches deep, and that'll all be planted with grass seed, and start, right now's the ideal time to get that growing, to get grass growing in the fall here, and then in the spring, we'll come back and, potentially spring, maybe as soon as this year, but we will get the rest of the asphalt seal-coated, and that'll be a park-like setting that will be allowed for food trucks that we talked about through several of our committees that can locate down there. Hopefully, eventually, you'll buy your food at a food truck and go across the street to East Riverwalk, but in the meantime, you'll be able to use that new grass area as an area to sit and enjoy the riverfront and enjoy food trucks in that area. So that's what's happening there. The West Riverwalk, that is basically from Washington Avenue heading west. The city, for council, we acquired those two additional homes there. We have four homes that are still standing, actually, five homes that the city owns. One, we are not looking to tear down. It's in relatively good shape, and we're still looking to see if we can relocate that at a vacant lot in the city of Kankakee somewhere, but the other four homes are in rough condition. We're authorizing the contracts to take those down here, and hopefully in the next 60 days. They're already working. Mr. Hassick and his team are working on utility shut-offs. The environmentals are being completed, and we will have those demoed down so we can have more vacant space along the West Riverwalk there. And then finally, we expect, I don't want to promise, but we expect, we're expecting tonight that the QT development at exit through eight may come tonight for you, for the redevelopment. There's just a few legal easements that are still being done. This is on their end, working with Spacian Taylor's office to get that done. The ball's now in QT's court. They just requested, we thought we'd have that tonight, if they could have a couple additional two weeks, and so we'll bring that hopefully at the first city council meeting in October for approval, but the project is still going full steam ahead. It's just getting the redevelopment agreement put together to the S.A.S factory of all parties involved. So that's a lot there. A lot of good things going on right now. Obviously, sometimes we have some of the negative things that we continue to try and address, but I think overall, a lot of things are moving in the right direction, and excited to continue to see, bring this all forth to the community as we move forward, so. It is 8:14. Is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion from Alderman Prude. I have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, everyone.[1785.87][1785.87]